Okay, it's four o'clock. We're all here. So, begin the board meeting. Any oral communications? Okay, we can move on to the floor of minutes.
I will do except.
Is it not working? Okay, it's approved five zero. Okay, thank you. And now we move on to a presentation on research of this adoption and criteria for building branch libraries by John.
Okay, to Carol, this is old news because I did this four years ago.
This is so familiar.
Yeah, should. But I figured, since we have, the majority of the board is new, that if we have your work. So, just a little background, in 2010, as a result, or maybe 2009, I think it was 2010, as a result of the financial downturn, the Great Recession, the sales tax revenues were down in 2009 a ton, and the mayor made what was a, to some people, an incredibly unpopular move in closing the branch library. There was lots of outspoken anger, et cetera. And he also, in 2016, managed to put part of that property on a long-term lease to, a lot of people thought it was to make sure that the branch could never open again. That's what a lot of people thought. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. It's out on East Valley Parkway. You ever been out to that city facility? It's a community center. It's, every time I've gone to something out there, one of the strategic plan focus meetings was out there. And, I mean, the place is cavernous and empty. We were in a room, half the size of this, this room, and there was maybe twelve of us. They have a basketball court, and they had two full-time city employees then, you know, taking care of the basketball court. So, we kept hearing that, at least I did, from the Save Our Library people, that they definitely wanted to get a branch library back. So, I figured I'd take a look. So, I did a lot of research on literature, and I looked at the independent libraries in North County and elsewhere in San Diego that had branches. And then I'll just take you through that. Okay, to date, and I haven't studied anything since 2019, but there were no really relevant studies or articles covering the criteria used to determine location, size, and offerings for a branch library. I think Reno might have something later to add on that, but I wanted to get through these first. Population density and overall community size are factors. Community neighborhood input can result in political decisions regardless of the facts. And all the branch libraries that I found never had anywhere near the resources of the main library. So, it appeared that most of the branches that I saw, and it appeared to be political and not well thought out when somebody established a branch. I found a university that decided they needed a branch from the main library on campus, and it was like two or three blocks away, and had a branch library. So, I don't know all the factors used on doing that, but maybe the main library was just overwhelmed by them. We had a big look at having a brand-new library in 2016 and putting it in Great Day Park. And what I researched said that civic centers in parks are usually suboptimal locations with inconvenient pedestrian and vehicle access, and that would be very true of Great Day Park. Libraries located in shopping center and restaurant areas have higher patronage. And you could think, well, let's put it at the mall. Okay, then we basically shut it down from Thanksgiving to Christmas because nobody can get in. And going to the mall and finding parking and walking is, can be a chore, especially if you have small kids with you. What we have, where you just drive in, most of the times, there's plenty of parking, and you just walk right in. Very, it's convenient for the type of town that we are, which is a driving town, not a walking town. So, then I got into specifics. And I looked at Carlsbad and Oceanside, which have their own libraries. And in Carlsbad, and you can look at Carlsbad as a rectangle that's longer north to south than it is east to west. Population's probably greater than 115,000 now. The branches are well over seven miles each other. One of them's real small, and the other one's pretty robust. But they're both great distances from the main library, seven, over seven miles, which that makes sense, because driving around Carlsbad, anytime when there's traffic, is not easy. So, that made perfect sense. Okay, Oceanside, same thing, it's a rectangle, but it's wider east to west than it is north to south. Really good population. Their one branch is four and a half miles east from the main library, in a shopping center on Mission Avenue. And it's within striking distance of Camp Pendleton. And it seems, and that area has, it's got a lot of heavy population, and it seems to work for that. Okay, going along with John. Escondido, okay, our city defies description when it comes to a rectangle, circle, whatever. Iowa, to me, it looks like an octopus that didn't make it across the road in a truck rainbow. And it's got all these tentacles, but it does have a city center area, which the library, our main library, is in. And then if you go to outlier areas and say, well, how about here, or how about there, you come up with three or four locations that have pretty much equal status. And the branch was 2.6 miles from the main library, which is not very far compared to the other guys. And the majority of the Escondido's population is within three and a half miles of the main library. But again, there's outliers in every direction, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. National City, main libraries, main library only. I think, I don't know if it's still that way, but they, National City, got a lot of revenue out of NASCO, the shipyards there. I don't know how their situation is now. They have a branch of the San Diego County Library located just east of the city. So, in that response, you could say that we have a branch library in San Marcos, which is like, what, five miles, four or five miles from here? And then you get to questions, what distance from the main library should trigger evaluation at a branch? What services should a branch offer? And does a share of the co-location on a school campus or other location make sense? And what else? There's been, and I can't believe how fast technology is changing things in the past, since, basically, since cell phones got going. So, there's things that can be done now over the internet that 15 years ago were just So, you could make a case that, you know, should we look at stocking a branch with just broadband, whitefly video conferencing, access to library staff, next state delivery inventory? In other words, an unmanned branch. What other processes or mechanisms should be considered to maximize the branch library's offering? Because once you start manning something, you say, well, we just need two people. Well, you probably need closer to three to have two there all the time, because you've got vacations, people getting sick, you know, wife happiness. And people are not cheap, and when you have something manned, I'm sure the city's insurance also would go up. You could also make a case that people who are transportation, have transportation challenges, they don't have a car, it might be more cost-effective to pay for an Uber service that would bring them to the library than it would to have a branch that has, has traffic that might not justify having people onboard. So, there's all kinds of technological improvements that we could be looking at. In general, in San Diego County, there's a branch library that's more than four miles away from the main library. Most are relatively small. And as I was just discussing, tech, car technology could significantly increase the services offered to patrons at branches by enhancing, offering enhanced remote access. So, if we can have remote access, even over your laptop at home, contacting library staff, any of that would be tremendously more cost-effective than having a branch. If, for instance, if Valley Center was a part of Escondido, that for sure would qualify for a branch, because it's roughly 10 miles out. But that's not the case. So, my conclusion was that, while I didn't care for the way it was done, I was working and I wasn't paying a whole lot of attention, but it was done with, the mayor didn't do it in a touchy-feely way when he closed the branch. Okay, just like he didn't do it in a touchy-feely way when he brought in LSNS. It created a lot of anger and angst in the community. So, I offer trying to find ways to increase access, but owing to the way Escondido is laid out, and owing to our, I'm thinking our resources may improve significantly in about a year, but I think we need to look at some cost-effective, intelligent ways to increase access to our library, other than just blindly putting a branch somewhere. Thoughts, questions?
Well, I was just wondering if we should let Reno come in and give his thoughts, and then that might answer some of our questions.
Sounds good.
Well, as John mentioned, I tried to do a little bit of research in preparation for tonight, just to see what, if any, data I could find as far as new methodologies for how libraries can select where, and how many, and how big library branches, or does the library that people are built. The reality is, is that there's not much out there as far as what we call good research and good methodologies. There are some state libraries that offer standards of service. California is not one of those states. So, there are some states that say you need X amount of books per capita, or X amount of square feet of libraries per capita, and that's kind of state standard, state minimum to qualify for funding. California's not one of those states. So, then we have to look at what is, kind of, the next practices, or what is happening regionally, or kind of like-for-like to, in California. Again, strictly because each community will have varying levels of, you know, revenue from taxes, and also population size served. So, obviously, even locally between Escondido, Carlsbad, Oceanside, we have some disparities in what are available resources and needs of each of those communities. That being said, I was very impressed at the city of San Diego. They have a library master plan they just published last year in around December, so it's fairly recent. Again, it's all based on metrics and resources for the city of San Diego, but just to give you a little bit of comparison of, in the region, what is San Diego thinking when they're trying to figure out how they build their libraries. I'll be happy to share the master plan, you can also Google it, but to give some perspective, their, one thing that I thought was very surprising, take away from their plan, was that when they're considering brand-new locations, brand-new branches, their recommendation is for building a minimum of 20,000 square feet for a branch, and their ideal target is 25,000 square feet per branch size. Their rationale has to do with the fact that a lot of libraries need a lot more people's space, and because they need that for meeting rooms, programming, event space, et cetera, that adds on a lot of square footage to those libraries beyond the stacks, which used to be a big component in library design. Libraries don't need as many stacks, because a lot of them are investing more heavily in digital collections, off-site access to those digital collections, and also much more investment is going towards programs and events, and those meeting rooms, study room spaces. So, that's kind of the rationale behind the city of San Diego's recommendation for larger branch libraries or expanded branch libraries. Now, also, curiosity, I wondered how much a $25,000, or $25,000 square foot library would cost currently. A couple of examples I found in their area were about the 40 million to 50 million range for a modern $25,000 square foot library, and some of those were in the $25,000 to $30,000 square foot. So, that's a big number. Everybody just think about how much that costs. Our library currently is just under $40,000, right, $39,000 square feet.
Yeah, just to add some color to that, when our library was built, we were a city of under 80,000. So, we were, at that time, right on the money as far as the rule of thumb of, what, a half a square foot per person?
Yep. So, as John mentioned, the rule of thumb for the per capita square foot for library spaces for a long time is about 0.5 square feet, half square foot. The city of San Diego and their master plan, they paid it a little bit lower at 0.35 to 0.45 square feet per capita. That for us in Edo would be around the 95-ish thousand square feet of library space is what, if we were the city of San Diego, what we would be recommending, which of course is 50,000 square feet plus, you know, what we currently have.
Yeah, San Diego, when I looked, 2018, had 34, 35 branches, probably a couple more now.
Yes. They have quite a lot more branches than we do. Of course, we have none, but, you know, even for modernized systems, they have quite a lot of branches, especially for city libraries, so they're often similar scales to, you know, a city like LA, which has a lot of branch libraries in addition to the county systems and other big metro areas. So, it makes sense that San Diego would have a lot of branches. Beyond that, I would say, there hasn't been too much in the way of solid methodologies that help us decide where to locate a branch library, if anywhere. A lot of it is still kind of a negotiation, I would say, between local stakeholders, based on, based on location of property that's available, especially if it's owned by the administrative district, so either the city or county, whoever's making the decision. A lot of it has to do with, you know, access to, the easiest way of building a library, really, is what a lot of it comes down to, from what I've read. But there has been a trend, more recently, to consider libraries in the context of, how would a retail space choose, given, but with twist, because obviously libraries aren't retailing. Because we don't necessarily, we're not looking to maximize profit like retail is. So, while a metric like foot traffic would coincide with, say, an increase in profit or income for a retail space, so it might have high foot traffic in the mall, for example, not everybody has access to that space, right? We could libraries that would also consider how equitable is the location to everybody? Can people who don't have the means to travel very far get access to that location? Do people with disabilities have equal access to it? Underserved or large-sized communities, do they have access? And that, those are some considerations that a lot of businesses in retail don't necessarily have to contend with, but we as library and local spaces do have to consider those key factors in identifying how many and where to place many satellite or branch locations. I will mention that the difference between staffing a 10,000-square-foot library and a 25,000-square-foot library isn't actually that much. Most of what you're doing is either having one or two service desks, and then having staff to run programming and coordinating. It's really more of a matter of the number of service hours you want for the location that a county staff. So, really, going from 10,000 to 25,000 isn't too much of a strain on staff, especially at a branch level, because a lot of the administrative work is done centrally at the main branch. And then the branches themselves might have a assistant manager, assistant manager, and then circulation staff, sometimes supported by programming, usually the librarian, maybe two librarians if it's a very high children, high teen population, depending on where it's placed. So, really, staffing is less of a concern for branches. It's really more about hours there, and then as far as the building, it's really the cost of construction here in California that is the main limiting factor of how big and how many branches you can build, plus revenue.
Just ask a quick question. Besides learning that was very insightful, like, what prompted the branch to buy today? I don't know.
It was mainly a couple of things. I'm optimistically looking forward to a significant increase in city revenues in about a year. Don't know if that's going to happen or not. If it does, the money needs to be allocated, well, I think, if, I think the first thing will be to build backs in reserves that are being depleted, that would be my guess. But getting our collection budget increased for the first time in seven or eight years, is that, until LSNS came here, we didn't really have, as I understand it, a regular collection budget. It varied from year to year. And since then, it was set at 250,000 in 2017, and there it is today. It's kind of like the minimum wage, you know, and you need to be better if it was raised annually per cost of living, or, or just looking at the, if there is a metric of how library costs, books, et cetera, are flowing up nationally, that we would stay in step with that, and we have not. So, it's that, and once that money comes flowing in, there will be talk from some people in this community about, where, what are you guys going to do on a branch? And I was trying to maintain a relationship with the group, well, they changed their name from Save Our Library to something else, whatever. They were extremely upset and wanted to know what my position was on re-establishing a branch. And after I did some research, I'm thinking we need to do some other things besides just open a branch. We've got to fix, we've got to get the main ship back in good shape, and then we can, I guess, work concurrently to see if it makes sense to do other things, to reach, get the community involved, and I'm not sure that a branch is, at this point, I'm not sure that a branch is the best way to do that.
Thank you, John, for bringing this up, because it is something that we need to keep an eye out for, the long-term goals, and not just focus on the short term. Reno, this might be very, very wishful thinking, but I'm going to throw it out there. With the library renovation happening, we're probably going to figure out, have to figure out some solutions to keep the library open. Could we use that time to go to other areas of Escondido and see what the usage is like for a temporary facility? Like the East County, the East Valley Community Center area have a pop-up library there during the renovation, trying to see what the traffic looks like? Just throwing that out there as something to consider.
That is something we can pass along to, I can pass along to the city, and I can be Robert, we can pass it on as well. I know the city, I'm sure, makes it in the list of city assets and might have other properties they might be aware of that do fit for such a scenario. I don't know them off the top of my head, but if we can investigate more, if the board would like to have more details or some examples, something like that.
Great, thank you. Okay, we can move on to item number three. Request for being able to reduce the current maximum number of checkouts for Hoopla?
Yes. So, hopefully you had some time to review the report I prepared. I mentioned this in a prior board meeting, and this time, I'm ready for us to ask for your approval for this change. Essentially, we are recommending reducing the current monthly downloads from five to three, and coinciding with that, also implementing a hard cap, budget cap, per month on the expenditures for Hoopla. Annually, we already internally set a limit for a budget, I would say, of 15,000 for Hoopla, at the maximum, at least 6. something percent of our budget, overall for collections. The reason we're instituting these caps is because Hoopla, unlike many of our other digital resources, is a paper-use surface. Currently, no matter whether you read it, whether you watch it, or whatever, as long as you download it, the library's charged for that download. And the good thing is that we've been getting steadily more and more Hoopla users per month. Unfortunately, as John and Ruben are aware, the budget Unfortunately, as John and Ruben are aware, the budget doesn't increase when our users increase. The budget stays the same, and we make the budget work. The budget, last year, we spent almost a bit over the ten percent of the overall collection budget just on Hoopla. And the checkouts for Hoopla were less than three percent of total checkouts. So, being stewards of the budget, we don't recommend continuing to spend as we have been, instead trying to use these caps to make sure that the expenditures for Hoopla don't pass the fifty thousand, which again is around six percent of our budget. Getting it closer in line with the amount of checkout at three percent, all getting a little bit of room to continue growth. Based on a review of the stats, I would say more than fifty percent of Hoopla users check out one to three items per month. It's around that, I would say, sixty percent of users are that. And then the other forty, occasionally we'll do four or five, so a little bit more than three. So we are beginning some power users. But overall, to ensure that we stay within budget and in fairness of all the other patrons that want to use the Hoopla collections, we are requesting this cap, or these new caps.
When you say that it will affect about forty percent of the users that are super users, how many people is that?
Each month, we have anywhere between eight hundred, nine hundred unique users, so individual users. So forty percent of that, four hundred, so probably around two hundred people. Our goal is, after this meeting is approved, to email all our Hoopla users so that they're aware of these changes, and give them those recommendations of how to make use and still get their downloads per month. Keep in mind, this is for a library card per month. So if a household happens to have more than one library card, they have as many extra downloads they have in as library cards they have. So we have some families that do make use of that. Other families might have only one, or two. But that is similar to many of our other library services.
And, sorry, and there's no age limit on Hoopla children can have their own account card?
Right.
When would you make this effective?
It would be effective starting next month, so starting December first.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Do you know how much of the content that I have on Hoopla is not available or already via other platforms? I know there's e-books, right? I know we have Libby, so I just wanted to know if any crossover?
There is some crossover, primarily with our main other ebook and non-ebook platform, Libby Overdrive. The main difference with Hoopla and some of the other platforms is that Hoopla doesn't have whole periods, because it's just on demand. And it also is the only service that offers streaming video and streaming music. Ebooks and non-ebooks can be found, a lot of them duplicate between Overdrive and Libby. There are some publishers that might be exclusive only to one or the other, depending on whatever arrangement they've made. But the main bonus of why we kept Hoopla rather than suggesting or recommending putting all the money to Libby Overdrive is the fact that Hoopla has that movie streaming that you can play on smart TV, for example, like Netflix. And it also allows for instantaneous downloads rather than having to wait, which is something that's fairly common with Libby Overdrive, which acts more like a digital version of the traditional library model, where there's X number of copies available. Once those copies are checked out, and one's checked out a person, and then the return is similar to physical items. So we like giving our patrons flexibility by having Hoopla. But Libby Overdrive's prices tend to be a little bit better for repeat use, and we get a little bit more anchor, but by investing in a Libby Overdrive item versus the paper download we have with Hoopla.
So, question, so how much of the budget is Libby? So that kind of begs the question, like, to increase the number of titles or copies that we have in Libby, is it worth to remove some of those Hoopla, on, totally? Rights, folks who aren't having to wait, so we can get around this whole on-demand situation?
Right, and that point is well met. I think we have discussed, I mean, we have to do a little bit more research, because we did run into some of our sister LSNS libraries that have cut off Hoopla, or are considering cutting off Hoopla and investing more into Overdrive. The reverse is also possible, where we cut off Overdrive and put it all into Hoopla. I've seen some libraries put that route. Both have pros and cons, as I have before to discuss. The, the main difference is that our current Libby Overdrive users are much higher. I would say, I can pull up the data from our past board meetings. But from the top of my head, honestly, the number of users per month for Libby Overdrive is around four times as many as Hoopla, and the budget is about that much more. It's about, it's not much, much more. But let me see what I can find. Like, do you have a round two meetings ago, and we will do a really large budget? So Hoopla, this is later, is fifteen thousand, and Overdrive is twenty-four, twenty-five, around twenty-seven thousand. So, not necessarily about, we can say about double the budget for Overdrive as for Hoopla, but we're getting four times the amount of downloads for it. So the return on the investment is much higher currently on Libby Overdrive than on Hoopla, which is why we increase the budget for Overdrive and reduce the budget for Hoopla.
I just have one quick question in regards to the budget cap and then the patron-like experience. If the cap is hit on a given day, like, what would it look like to someone that's trying to, maybe get the last download of the day or something?
Right, so unfortunately, Hoopla has a very strict limit. And what they get is essentially, once the last amount of the money to that day of the cap is reached, okay, okay, we'll get a message saying, essentially, your library, your budget cap has reached the day. Please try again tomorrow. And if there's extra money from one day, they roll over to the next, which is rare. I don't anticipate that happening very often, but when it does, anything left over happens to be useful the next day. Again, one of the reasons why we recommended both the decrease in downloads and the cap, rather than one or the other, is to ensure that it's less likely that we'll be getting that cap as often. It's still gonna happen, just because the daily amount won't allow for an unlimited number of downloads as we have. And just again, to keep in context, we're gonna be going from this last month that was uncapped, it was nearly six thousand dollars in Hoopla spending. And we're gonna be going down to around fifteen hundred. And so...
They will see a mess.
People will notice. We are gonna encourage patrons to try to spread out their checkouts. A lot of libraries' systems have done this, that patrons get trained to wait until the end of the month to try to do it. I don't recommend that, but I do recommend them trying to check in more and more each day to make sure that they do get the checkout they want. And also to encourage them to use one or many other ebook resources. Just everybody remembers, most of the downloads for Hoopla has ended with our other e-resources, our core e-audiobooks. And so Overdrive does have those. And we'll have staff watching to see if we need to make more purchases more quickly on Overdrive for those e-audiobooks, to try to match any increase for our Hoopla users towards Libby Overdrive.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just wondering what the user experience would be like. You've explained it well, thank you.
We were six thousand last month, or three, this will be three months of this budget year. Are we gonna be close to the amount of the whole year?
We are gonna move some money. So thankfully, we had some funds roll over from last year. And most of the time, at the end of the fiscal year, a lot of the line items, a lot of these lines might have a four hundred left over, and those get pulled together and sent them over to Hoopla typically. Well, we got this through Hoopla or Libby, but most recently, it's all been going to Hoopla to allow, in the past, for example, the reason why we had twenty-four thousand last fiscal year. A good chunk of that was leftover money from the year before that go in, and they asked for credit in Hoopla. So we have a little bit of a cushion they did, but I didn't want us to keep going at six thousand a month or more, because that wouldn't have been sustainable. We really do need to institute that cap and start getting everybody to realize that the budget doesn't allow for the ongoing downloads that we've had in the past with Hoopla. But we still have other resources, like Libby Overdrive, Clipster for magazines through our cooperative. And we're always looking for additional options. There's another one called the Palace Project, which is also run through the cooperative that we're looking to see if we can reinstate. We do have some access to it, it's not as well-stocked as our Libby collections or our Hoopla collections.
I think, do you think we need to vote on this?
Okay. I motion to approve the change.
Second.
Approve by zero.
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you all.
Okay, move on to the request approval for the exterior, exterior room.
All right. So this, well, these are two designs that are being painted and funded by funding through the Estadio Community Foundation. It is the local artist, his name is Tim. The designs may not stunning enough looking like these two designs. We received some feedback after opening the voting, which is why I wanted to open the voting. Any comments? So the artist is working now with reaching out to our local indigenous tribes and peoples to ensure that whatever design is picked does align with their traditions and is in some way okay by our local tribes and native peoples. Unfortunately, that wasn't fully vetted during the process before we got to these two designs. But my expectation is gonna be something along these lines, with some adjustments to make sure that they are aligned with our native peoples' traditions and that they have had some input to ensure that they make sense before they get painted in our permanent apartment building here in Estadio. So mostly, we might have to come back to re-vote on the designs. But I did want to be aware of what the two designs are, and it's very likely it's gonna be something akin to one of these. As of voting today, before I came over, I did check the number of votes. And again, the number of votes is just an indication of which one will win the likes more. It doesn't necessarily mean that that design is the final one. Estadio Community Foundation has the final approval. But design number one is currently the front runner by quite a bit. It got almost triple the amount of votes as the design two.
Yeah, my wife has a degree in art, and why she, she personally liked number two, she said, "No one's gonna understand what the heck it is." And so she said, "You gotta go with one." Not surprised.
And so, I had been urged by the foundation and the artist to ensure that we ask the board for approval of both designs. We, it will depend on how comfortable you feel doing that, or whether you would like to wait to see what the actual final design are be. But I'm open to whatever the board decides to do moving forwards and stuff.
I'd prefer to wait and then hear more of the story, but that's just my stance.
I'm with you.
I think too, we can give some feedback, just making sure that our commitment to, you know, diversity and inclusion is known. So making sure it's, you know, culturally appropriate, like you said. But then also, right, and on our other mural, we have a young woman on that. So maybe, you know, focusing on, it just is kind of strange to me that we put two women, you know? So that would be my advice, but I'm with the others that have that tweet.
And if you have any feedback you would like to give to the artist, feel free to either contact me or through the city, Robert. We can send it all to them. I, like I said, I think it'll probably be a variation of one of these two designs once the artist has a bit more time to get feedback.
Yeah, the, on number two, to the right of, well, over on the Escondido side, having all those symbols that are seen in the stars, kind of goes well with the one that's on the left and the other one. The belt isn't, I don't know what it's there for.
Wait, are you talking about the orange trees in the sea?
No, I'm looking at, on sign two, to the, to the right, pardon me, to the right of the, whatever that ghost we think coming out of the flame is. All those, those, they're basically looking at star constellations, you know, like we have. But this is obviously an American version, so I think that fits. If you had, you got the one on one side and that on the other, I like that, then a bell.
Rena, can I, something's, can I ask for clarification about how this came about? And how you were included and the process this far? This is kind of a surprise.
Yes, so the, the main driving factor was, I believe, the community foundation had a call for artists, I think sometime in the fall of last year? Or maybe, I think so. I vaguely remember it happening in December. And it was driven by their urging to have more local art in public spaces. The artist, Tim, reached out with City and Library, asking for our approval, our support for a mural of some kind on the library. And he recommended the spot that you see now, which is on Camia and Second. Obviously, we're going to be on the other side where the correct mural exists, and the other areas weren't really welcoming to art, where all the windows are. And so that led to, I believe, a series of interviews, and it worked through the way through the community foundation, and then made its way to the city's public art commission, which has approved and reviewed it, all the two designs. Robert would be able to give more details about that process than I can have. But beyond that... But beyond that, it then moved on to the board as we're here today and asked your input on the design that I've already gone through those stats now.
I, I do take issue with how the process went so far because the Public Art Commission was involved, but the Escondido Public Library Board was not involved in the death of Calmia either. And so, any kind of thing that's happening with the library, we should definitely bring to our attention. The previous mural was brought before us before, I think it went out to the public and they showed us the art designs. So seeing the art designs out to the public before we even knew what was going on, I think was really inappropriate. And I would appreciate if the city kept us involved beforehand. And so, I mean, it would be great if the artist could come before the board, let us know what his thinking on the mural before it goes out to the public again. That's just my feelings and my thoughts.
Yeah.
You know, just because we've had the issue, we talked about it, can we make sure that the rest of the mural is, you know, culturally appropriate, that making sure that the Escondido sign or deal with those materials makes sense and, yeah, I think that likely would have been caught right away had it, like, come across.
This is a minor point too, but it's so bright, it looks like a new entrance for the library. So would there be a way to defer traffic back into the front if need be, or just note from experiences and employee entrance, exits? Maybe from a safety perspective, it's also something to consider.
Well, that's kind of my point too, is like, we should have asked, you know, about the planning of this to you and to the board because we have other priorities right now? And do we want to do this right now? But it sounds like it's very out there, but that would have been a good topic of discussion for us.
Yeah. Like, we could use some money, you know, I just did some rather basic math, and if we'd had a three percent cost of living increase in our collection budget, it would now be over three hundred thousand bucks. Okay? Just, just in the last seven years, maybe even close to six, three, three, six. But just now that you guys mentioned that, I'm looking at a bare parking lot. So for six days a week, there are cars out there, so the bottom third of this mural is not going to be visible.
There is, these are all very valid points. Part of that, parking lot is relatively light, but all right, there's usually at least one or two cars there every day. Lighting at night, I'm not quite sure what that might be. It might not be a concern, but...
Well, no, because I know with the previous mural, we did make sure, right, that it would be well lit, and so when people drive by, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a space where others could, their own artwork could get affected, right?
Right. We're being aware of that.
Exactly. Yes. So we would definitely want to look into that as well, making sure that the amount expended isn't ruined by...
Yeah, this, this one faces Calmia, and, yeah, you're right, I don't know how well lit that is. Yeah.
And I also, while, for either demands, I appreciate trying to be inclusive. I just feel that the mural on the other side, it, they don't flow together, right? I think there's that issue as well, you know, they are opposite ends of the building to make that, you know, they're not joined. But they feel very different, and the mural that we have on the other side of the building is incorporated within the library. So there's something to keep in mind as well. And I do definitely have second impressions, considering how this is looking like in our friends, but just looking at the pictures, I was just wondering, can we make this a second entrance? You know, if we program that, that would be really great. So I imagine others in the public would see the same thing.
Well, not many, I mean, not much of the public is going to see this because it's on Camila, Calmia, facing the kidney dialysis place across the side street. Only if you're northbound on Calmia will you even see this.
There's our feedback. So let's move on to the next.
I was going to say, it doesn't sound like you want to go to a meeting. It sounds like you want to table it.
Yes.
And just bring it back to another meeting until you figure out more information.
Yeah, Rena.
So I can go ahead and just kind of table it.
Thank you.
In that direction to your staff, right?
Yeah, we would like Rena to take all of our concerns and feedback. Hopefully, this will be on the next month's.
Yep. We'll plan for next month. Hopefully, we'll have some updates from the artist, and we'll pass them on to the feedback from the board and see where we're at next month with this topic.
Thank you. And I think we can also invite, you know, anybody who's involved with the community foundation, the artists, as well as the art commission to come in and, you know, have a full discussion.
I definitely want to, would want to hear about who they consulted with and what they thought for cultural, or cultural reasons of any mural has to say.
And then we can move on to item number five, statistics report.
All right. All right, so we are looking at June statistics this month. Nothing major to highlight just from the stats. Let's see if there's anything that stands out in my mind. No? Anybody have any questions?
Just, just on website visits. This is, what's the outlier? April?
April. So in this time period, we, we transitioned to a new website tracking system for stats. So prior to the new website, we at the library had access to stats directly through Hoopla Analytics. The city now has the stats, and due to the way that the stats have been tracked, I suspect there's been a change in the metrics. The five thousand and five thousand nine hundred are based on the top two pages for the library that are monitored by the city. I unfortunately can't tell you currently, I'm still waiting to get a more detailed report as far as what, if we're missing any extra pages or if it's really having that different impact. But essentially, this is the main difference. We went from one tracker to another tracker, and some of those ways that they're measured, so what was the session in one versus the old Hoopla tracking system, had some sort of impact. But I'll be honest, I haven't been able to pinpoint what is causing that change. But at least it is consistent in its newness this, the two months, and then this month, I'm waiting to see for July, whether it's still in the five, six thousand range or something else caused it to either keep going up or keep going down or stay the same. That's the main cause of the sudden shift. We might be missing counting something. My only guess would be if we're not counting the catalog, or if we were counting the catalog before and now we're not. That would be around the number of the uses per month. That would coincide with that dip.
Thank you, and good luck.
I do wonder if there's a lot of unique traffic that just goes straight to the catalog versus the landing page.
Correct. And that, that's the number where I'm suspecting the data is being shifted. And so, it's going to be working with the city IS team to see if we can get that tracker into the catalog. It might be possible, it might not be possible, depending on how they set it up or how they want the data to run for the city site, because it is tracking the entire city page. So there might be some issues with trying to add in more trackers for our catalog, which does use a different URL and is it a different domain site than the city site?
The only other question I would have is, the June visits increased significantly. Is that because events with children were back?
Right. Yep. Because in May, we took a little bit of a pause for the storytimes, and then back to June, we restarted with extra. And so, that is where we're seeing that bump. Overall, as I mentioned before, the per month average is about, it stays pretty steady, gathered it up for the year, and the totals for this year versus last year have increased overall. But there is some fluctuation month to month, especially before and right after summer. It gives staff time to prepare and then time to rest. Any other questions to those stats before we move on to the strategic plan? All right. So this month, we're just giving some updates on the strategic plan goal and objectives for number three, support the Escondido economy. These are goals primarily related to, what was the thing? Okay. Yes. So we're reducing waste, encouraging health and living, I don't think that's the correct number three. I think that'll be number four, which is the health and wellness, but the chart right below it is correct. So these ones do have to deal with the health and well-being of our library operating programs. So we do have a number of programs right now in the works for the fall, so we're thinking September, October, and that has to do with wellness. And so, these also have to do with how we do our collection reading process and the reuse of materials that are donated or discarded from the library. A lot of those go to our friends, provide a resale or donation to other organizations that we've, as we've mentioned in the past. We have a number of sustainability programs coming up in December and October. We have been working with staff to increase the amount of outreach events, so these are the community events we do outside of the library. So we've done some, we just had National Light Out, and we did a outreach to the Safari Park Employee Health Day to get them engaged with the library, because a lot of their workers are local. We're also continuing our succulent swaps, which are popular, and we continue to offer a number of programs for children that aren't tech-focused and have screens. Some of most all our programs are away from screens, away from tablets, et cetera, although we are working at some more programs that actually do include some more technology to balance things out. And of course, we are looking to have, we continue to have our meditation and mindfulness classes as part of our healthy use series of programs with retired adults and young adults. So that's where we're at with the strategic goals since our last meeting or last time we mentioned this, particularly the strategic elements.
I'm really excited for some of the new programs that are to be developed, especially that's sustainable fashion, my registered plans, so I'm really looking forward to it. So I know we were part of, you know, that wrapping of the strategic plan. I think when we, for the objective of short travel distance and larger audience by providing programs, I, I think we envision more health events, not just outreach and advocacy, which, you know, I think those are still a part of it. And I think there are ways that we can expand on when we are doing those events. But I think the vision was more to have events, you know, maybe like at the Valley Community Center, although it's not a branch, right? Maybe you'll have a pop-up there for a weekend, or, you know, kind of see the mall, let us host a small book checkout session every now and then, so that community members that happen to be at the mall, like, hey, look what we're doing. I'm not sure if we have the technology or the ability to, because I know we used to have the book review way back when, to maybe they get loads of books with us, take them to these, right, national now. If we are really focused on outreach, on doing the actual programming, they'll take books with us and then ask them to come up if they have a catalog or if they can check out a book or talk through the process or that comes to draw up. There is a case to make that, you know, if they don't return the book, but it is also a case to make, well, now they have a library book, now they need to go into the library and return it at the very least. So I think even just with these proper events, there are ways to expand it, but I definitely want to push for the last two years that institution and to program outside.
Well, it's that program. I know with certain outreach events, like National Light Out, we do include giveaways of books, either from our literacy program or donations or extras from friends, rather than checking in and out and just give them out as part of, and it's set to present. And some of our outreach events, especially like a break day or National Light Out, are mostly youth staff, but we do have on occasion, like, in addition to our, our table, we'll have a table or space where we might be doing a craft or something, some extent like that. But I agree, we haven't done anything specifically like, say, a pop-up library that might all have that specific, so it's, let's say, we go to the park and it's Library of the Park, for example, or Storytime at the Park, or I've seen other libraries where you do like storytime at the laundry, things like that haven't been something we've done. We have started discussions, at least with adult division, of doing more work and doing programming, more classes, or work with our equal clubs in retirement homes, forest living facilities, groups that will occasionally have field trips to the library, but may not be able to come regularly for a program. And that's where we're aiming some of our adult efforts, because a lot of children's staff will go to like these outreach and do the craft. But again, it's not necessarily library-only or library-specific, it's an add-on to another that we might already be attending.
Yeah. So I want to add on, so like, the idea of going to retirement homes, right, people who are trying to use the basis of the computer. And I know I talked about this in my previous meeting about trying to incorporate teens and young adults to assist in that, right, organizing that library staffing time, right? It's limited here on that whole, everybody go over and write the program. So in terms of trying to recruit volunteers from our organizations that we can work with, whereas most of the whole library, library staff leaving this effort and requesting volunteers from their organizations to help. I know the company I spoke for, Escondido Education Compact, they have helped, yes, it's a teen volunteer program, so they're always looking for opportunities to do that. And they're literally listening right across the library. So I think there are possibilities to make that happen, also trying to recognize library staff in and of that.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments? We can move on to the rest of the board.
All right. My side of the board is too busy this night. We have a couple of new staff updates. So we had a long-term graphic designer who left, and we now have a new marketing coordinator. Her name is Esther. You might have already noticed some changes in the graphics in our social media, Instagram, et cetera, as we're getting Esther trained and onboarded. We're trying to incorporate a lot more elements that are, kind of updates to existing programs. We're trying to do a lot more photos from programs, that's a key metric that I'm trying to get all our staff to do, take a lot of photos, so you can see a lot more of those as we're going forward. Also mentioned that our literacy program has a new literacy coordinator to oversee it. Her name is Sheila Rodriguez. She's a longtime member, but she was grant paid, she was, yeah, all grant-loving, and now she is on the staff side. And so, Sheila is really excited to take on the lead and to help us expand and bring more attention to our literacy program. As we mentioned in the past, Escondido's literacy program... As we mentioned in the past, Escondido's literacy program here at the library is primarily grant funded. We get more than a hundred thousand dollars each year to fund our programs for adults and families. That includes a lot of staff funding for it and then also materials that helps support the classes and tutors that are all volunteer based for the literacy program. So yeah, we're keeping that moving. We recently, the city library has put out a follow-up to their Parks Pass program. They had a hiking backpack kit that we already have operating circulating. And this year, they come out with a follow-up, which is a scarp using kit. So it includes a portable telescope, a chair, and some other accessories. So we've applied for 15 of those kits. We're waiting now to hear whether we've been approved for all 15 or some number or less. But we are on shortlist. We have a separate chance to get at least some of them. Again, this is very competitive. It's not necessarily a grand program outstate, but we are hoping to get at least the majority of them. If not, we'll be happy with some fraction to make them available for our adults and children. They're anybody to get to get, but they are operated for its families and but really anybody can pass a hope through a telescope, a moon in particular or anywhere else. It's quite a fun thing that we've done library programs, that a library program passed with telescopes and they're always a fun activity for all ages. So I'm very supportive of this application. So we'll have news of that probably within a month or two. It's the state libraries, so sometimes they're faster than other times when it comes to getting these items out to us. Last but not least, I have some updates for the library renovation project. So the city has a new project manager for the renovation project. Again, the city is managing the renovation. His name is Ed. Ed is replacing Laura McClenn, who had been the lead from the start of the project for the library renovation. Actually, had to leave due medical reasons. We are a little bit behind schedule, but we are well aware of when we have to get the deadlines done. So currently, the phase of the project has moved into the construction documents. So design documents in theory are now complete and construction documents should have begun this month. For context, I need, along with other members of the city, right before we have meetings with the engineering and design firm, I guess, those meetings are bi-monthly, so twice a month or bi-weekly covered by one of the ten of Ed's. And I meet with Robert and some other city reps like Ed and Tim Prior and Laura to discuss any issues that might be coming up during the discussion with the engineering firm. Do we have any questions about the renovation?
On that group meeting that you have with Robert and Ed, is it like group decision making? Like, because you said the design documents are complete, or are you guys like selecting the design of like carpet and whatever furniture in those meetings together?
In most cases, yes. Typically during those meetings, rather reviewing selections or options or at least putting, I'm putting in recommendations. Ultimately, again, it is a city project. So we, Rob, Elsness, and me on behalf of us, do advise and be strong advising as far as what we think would work best operationally or what would be the best for the public-facing aspects of the project. I, of course, have no idea about how beachback and other things would work, but when it comes to the public side of the designs, a lot of that time is, help me make my recommendations as far as can we add in extra study rooms? Maybe the study rooms could work here and not there. Can teen spaces be considered all that is what's added? And in some cases, there is choices, but it varies on day to day as far as what is happening.
So the board knows and everyone knows I have reached out to the city manager and asked for more routine updates on our renovation plan. I think it would be a good idea if one of the trustees had a good contact with the city to get updates, plans, questions from the board, to have that one-on-one time. So I was thinking, and this is my thought, and I'm just going to go through all of it as a reminder to everyone, the board trustees for Escondido Public Library's primary mission is to be a local and energetic advocate for the essential services that the Escondido Public Library provides to our community and to give sound and timely advice and counsel to the Escondido City Council and library director, the development plans, policies, and programs that are responsive to our community needs and desires. Now that we're getting into this, maybe really design, construction, things, and a lot of decisions are going to be made on closed doors. I think now is the time to have the Escondido Public Library Board heavily involved because this has been greatly affected our community. And for one, I have a lot of questions, like what is the plan to continue library services during shutdown? We need to be talking about that now. We need to have a plan. How will the space look? How will it be moved? We want to be sure the second floor enhancements are included. What does the budget look like for this outside of the 10 million, there's going to be other costs? And how are design decisions being made? So thank you for your update, Reno, but now I'm requesting that we designate one of our library board trustees to have routine meetings with Robert and someone from the city that can answer our questions and include us in the process. We don't need to be in the bi-weekly meetings, but we definitely need to have that open line of communication each month because we're, as a board, going to have to answer to the community and make sure that the community is served at this time.
Is there a reason we can't be part of the twice a month meeting?
Good question.
That would be better. I would refer to Robert and maybe ask Ed or I'd have to review that with the city manager. That's not, that's not a decision that would be made at this staff level. That's a city manager.
So is that like a request that Virginia could send out and say we would like a board member present?
We are already in discussions of how to incorporate.
So I did email the manager and Jennifer and Robert just today. And I first requested a one-on-one meeting with somebody that we would just be, so I just be someone today who could, it could be on being in contact for the renovation project to take our questions and concerns and make sure that we are being advocated for the community and involved. So first, it's meeting with, I believe, Robert, one-on-one. And then from that, that person on board can develop the plans that are included looking forward. So do we have any volunteer code board that would like to serve them at capacity?
I could do it. It's been a while, but I was a contracts manager for the construction of Pacific Southwest Airlines Flight Training Billion Building. Goes back to before some of you were born, 1978. And we had a $2.8 million simulator going into a $3.5 million building. So to the cost of, just the cost of inflation since 1978, it probably surpasses the 10 million easily. So I'd be glad to, to sit in on at least a meeting or two and tell you how useful I think that we can be.
That sounds good. Does anyone else want to go in there?
I can be about that. So if John's not available, I'd really have you do it too because I have a lot of the program management. I think that's my job as a program management, so I'm pretty close to all of the comments.
So that sounds good. So the initial meeting with Robert and I'm not sure Jennifer's going to join, if we could send our question that the board has individually to both John and Carolyn and then maybe as soon as we get their meeting canceled, also it's totally devoted, you can attend that and you guys can decide what you forward.
Just to mention on your staff update, I'm really happy to see that Esther has a strong background in supporting social work, making nonprofit organizations, because that's who we really need to reach out to, in my opinion.
That's who we're very excited to get her.
That was, the focus group showed that glaringly that we needed to improve that. So that's fantastic.
I'll also mention, I didn't include her, but she also is fluent in Spanish, so she'll be able to help us with outreach to our Spanish communities. All right, so any more discussion about renovation or are we good to?
Oh, sorry. One thing I forgot to mention is Jennifer did let me know in an email that they will, the city will provide a library renovation update as of September, so that'll be in July, August, and October. And hopefully you guys can see that for this strategic.
Right. Quickly, we're past five. We have the goal service highlights, so we have a number of the programs in July. Again, succulent swap, very popular. It still amazes me how many people show up to succulents. I did not know they were as popular as they are.
That's because you're from Florida.
Yeah. Yeah, we have plenty of plants down there and succulents are not one of the primaries there. But over a hundred guests attended. So we are going to continue providing still at the succulent swap as long as we keep getting good results and good turnout. And we are also looking to see how else we can provide additional programs that align with that interest. So we have been discussing ways of doing a seed or some sort of seed library, lending library or sharing service. We're always looking to see if we have things like master gardener programs, doing presentations of flora, et cetera. So those are all avenues we are researching and trying to find either whether it's staff led or more likely a outside expert-led program to keep that going for our library patrons. The concerts continue again. Those are every second Saturday, still strong. Usually get around 70 to 100 attendees. That seems to be the number each month. I attended the July event, Archive and Pride Program. Hosted and at my plant of archives at San Diego. It was nice to learn a little bit more about Escondido's history in that realm. 13 people attended, but it was a nice way of opening discussions with plant archives and connecting them with our local history collection pioneer room. That was a main goal with the invitation and the hosting of that program. Any comments on the event? Before I move on?
Yeah, I do, I'm listening to LGBTQ heritage event. I've been really long to attend that. Five o'clock is sometimes hard for people that work. So I was trying to be work early and it just didn't work out. So that's just something to consider because I would have really liked to attend it. Also, I'm very happy of the inclusion of including that part of the community in the community event at the library. And it's kind of amazing that it was our first, first private event. So I applaud you for being completely inclusive in our community and I just wish you that you went that way there.
Good to go. I'm excited for more of this centering around heritage and understanding our, you know, current LGBTQ plus community in Escondido.
Now, the five o'clock time might have been something to do with presenter's schedule. A lot of the presenters will only work within their work hours, even though the library on those nights does usually stand up by the point of staff light, it starts like at six or seven. But that might have been, I can't say for sure if that was the case here, but I suspect it might have been something like that. Speaking of heritage, I have a quick highlights. I will say from these, I have heard and learned from staff that the fact that we receive photographs of ministers and what are they called? The scrapbooks from Chrissy, the Chrissy Cox family is apparently a very big guest. Cox apparently is a very well-known photographer in the area and a lot of photos locally. So we're very happy, our archivist is actually very happy and very excited to start the process of digitizing and also archiving and cataloging those collections so that way the community can access to them and they can cross-reference those photos and those collections with other local archives in St. Croftad, San Diego. Youth Services highlights, we'll also double up for a preview of the Summer Reading Challenge stats. So we did have over almost 1,500 people sign up for Summer Reading, so we had 1,439. We were especially happy to see more than 100 teens, because teens are always a hard group to get to do the Summer Reading Challenge. The 20 and 20 adults is also a pleasant surprise for me. Again, a group that is tricky to get into Summer Reading. I've learned that one of the reasons we might see so many is because in order to sign up their kids, the adults had to sign up as well. And again, that is a good tool to encourage family reading as a whole. So that way it's not just for the kids, but the parents are also reminded that we have a program for that and incentivize their own reading and modeling that behavior for their, for kids and their family. So I was very happy to see that as well. And you know, we've had a number of ways of encouraging not just reading, but they were encouraged to do what staff call our activities through the Summer Reading programs. So it includes using our shop, re-local shop local program, attending library programs and, you know, just checking out certain things like a display or using different areas of the library. They got credit for doing that as part of the Summer Reading Challenge. And the number of hours read, you can kind of see here how it breaks down. Again, kids and below have most reading, more than 1,000. But teens did a lot of reading as well, almost matching kids, even though there were far less of them. So the teens that we versus faced, we seem to be pretty good readers as far as our stats are showing. And that is our month for July.
Reno, for next month, would it be possible to just get a short update on how the subscription service that the archivist is using? How that's coming, how that's working?
Sure. Could you?
Well, we've got a subscription service that I don't believe we've had before.
We have.
You have some service that the, we were using for archiving photos?
We have EMI, which helps us archive. We also have, let me see, it's called haunted EM. That is also one of the ones we use for subscriptions. I'll double check to see which one, but it definitely gives you more detailed information about how our archiving, archivists.
Yeah, just how it's going, is it enough, et cetera?
Got it.
Was it the two, maybe here now with John, where we paid for a storage amount?
Yeah.
So we understand, yeah, how, how much storage we use if it's enough and, right? Okay, great.
Yes, that rings a bell. So I'll look into see whether we have any key updates for the board regardless of that.
Reno, just out of curiosity, what is the first show you really use for this coverage where there's like 100 kids on there?
Oh. So that is one of our magic shows.
Oh.
Yep. So that was the magic show and there was a lot of kids there, both friendly and almost our storytimes have almost as many children attending regularly. If you would have looked, in the third picture is a storytime, but definitely a portion of the children attending, the rest are behind the camera. Our storytime to average 100 plus in attendance fairly routinely, which is why when we pause them, you'll see that dip in visits. But yes, we But yes, we, it's one of the reasons why we're adding another storytime starting in September.
Thank you. Thank you, Reno. All this stuff. And we can move on to the trustee library, Mr. Corrigan, would you like to start?
Sure, I'll start, yeah. I was in the library, I think, two weeks ago, maybe a week ago, kind of just once together these days. But what I think is, is that we have foreign language or world language DVDs, like videos, which I had no idea existed until I stumbled upon them in one of the, you know, columns. And I was really pleased with the amount of like variety of languages and then the amount of videos for each language. So that was really cool.
Quick update of me, the kids visited again and they still love the library. And then on, I think Mondays, we noticed that there was a chess club. We didn't get a chance to attend this week, but it's upcoming in future weeks, it's on the radar.
Is that really?
I'm part of the Escondido Mothers Group and Escondido Moms. And one of the moms had like put out a post that she's looking for expensive things to do with her kids and anyone who can create passes to anything. And I pointed her to the direction of the passes that are available on the Escondido Public Library website. I just told her about it. I said, let me know when you can help me get it. Several mothers reached out, said we can't wait for you to find it. So I went on the website and I navigated it pretty quickly, so I gave several moms the directions to that part of the website. And I kind of went through the process too, to, because I was writing it down to explain to them how to get to it. And then I realized that you need a library card to check out anything, so then I put that, kind of, by the way, if you don't have a library card, you need a pen and paper. And several moms thanked me for the information. So nice to be able to be like, hey, I know something. And tomorrow, I get it tomorrow, I'm going to try to drop into the Read to a Drive in, even though I don't have a forty-eight-year-old, I just want to see what it's like in kind of a, thank you.
So last year, I used the Calm Republic's Parks passes quite frequently to go to the beach. I haven't been able to spell the word beach this year. The pass is still available?
I believe so.
Okay, good.
I believe Esther and I have crossed paths in the past. I believe she may volunteer for Compact, as she probably mentioned. If your question has, like, we were there once. So she's really grateful, because she's there. I attended the animal beach for us about that, I think, last week. There was quite a handful of people there. I'm glad, I'm glad, I, my son had all his teeth. As soon as we got there, a lot. And so I waited, you know, sitting in my car with the AC for fifteen minutes, doing a water nap or go in, and I had to go in. And it was a good call, because there was a line to get into the parent's room, so they were waiting for the animal to arrive. And so it was really exciting to see that there was a line for that library. And I don't know if this is new, right before the event started, they asked if they could have a walk-in photograph that they could raise their hand and have a green letter, and that would be assigned to the marketing coordinator and ops to be focused on. So I think that was pretty neat. I think maybe having made it signed up forever, they made it, I've heard that, so, but I thought that was pretty neat. But I'm guessing it's really popular, because every time we go, since I've been checking out, our first two top choices are always checked out. And so now I'm giving over some, I mean, I'm waiting for certain titles. And so that's, that's good. I also went to the Arts and Adults Calligraphy, and I was chatting with an older woman, Spanish. And she, and after all, she heard about the program, and she said she was signing, she was in the library, she already has that. She expressed that she has been wanting more tech classes in Spanish, which she looks at, she has to like outsource a lot of that, so she'll take neighbors to help her do basic things on like computer or, you know. So there is a need for, and I'm in the process of applying at home, so I'm looking forward to getting home to commit books at the library. Now I have those responsibilities.
Hey, weekend, John, thank you, everyone.